People who stewarded it for generations. The Oshati Shakawi include seven bands, so I would also like to recognize that over forty additional tribal nations likely used this area for trade ceremonies and social gatherings.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda for the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five Regular Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Director Salin.
Aye.
Egan.
Aye.
Garland.
Aye.
Knowles.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye. Bates. I'm sorry, Egan.
Aye.
Garland.
Aye.
Knowles.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will have comments by Director Egan.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Principal Duran and Prairie Middle School for hosting us here tonight, and to our technology setup and safety and security teams for everything you do in allowing our meetings to be held at our schools. Happy New Year. I hope your two thousand twenty-five is off to a great start. It was an honor to attend the Cherry Creek Innovation Campus groundbreaking ceremony last week. In his remarks, Principal Steve Day shared specifics about the economic impact of CCIC during the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. This estimated four point one million annual impact includes the cost savings for students in certifications and college credits, as well as grants and service to the community such as the tiny homes. Specifically, cost of certification savings, two point five million; cost of college credit savings, six hundred and five thousand; grants earned by CCIC, six hundred and thirty thousand; industry donations, two hundred and forty-two thousand; and tiny home savings at eighty-eight thousand. We're very excited about the next chapter of the Cherry Creek Innovation Campus. The Cherry Creek Schools Foundation is excited to start sharing the results of their Educator Initiative Grant Program. Check out their Facebook and Instagram pages to see how community support is enhancing the educational experience for all students. Educator Initiative Grants are funded through community support, and the foundation's upcoming gala is on Thursday, March twenty-seventh. Tickets will be on sale for a night of student performances, live and silent auctions, and more, all to bring resources to our CCSD community. The foundation is also hosting a Super Service Saturday event where members of the community will gather to make hygiene kits for Cherry Creek School students. This event will be held Saturday, February eighth, at Polton Elementary School. Volunteer shifts are available from nine to three. For more information about foundation events and donation opportunities, please check out the website, ccstfoundation.org. Congratulations to the Cherry Creek High School eSports team on their two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five state championship. And a nonprofit started by Cherry Creek High School students just two years ago has offered two thousand dollars in academic scholarships through Equity Learning, highlighting academics and students from underserved communities in our state. I just returned from a very informative weekend with my colleagues at the State School Board and was reminded of a very important topic. Parents and caregivers, please talk to your students about being cautious with posting anything on social media. Everything a student posts becomes a digital footprint which could have a negative impact on their future endeavors. It's also imperative that students are not using social media as the platform for reporting concerns or threats. School and law enforcement officials want to ensure that actionable concerns are being handled appropriately and avoiding posts that may instill unnecessary fear in our communities. If you want to report a threat or concern, please use Safe to Tell at one eight seven seven five four two SAFE, or your local law enforcement agency or main school office. The district's exceptional volunteers will be honored next week at an awards dinner, but we thank all of our volunteers who show up each and every day in support of our students and staff. This January, Cherry Creek Schools is hosting a virtual donation drive to support CCSD students and their families with food hygiene products, snacks, and other essentials. All donations support school resource pantries throughout the district, and it's never been easier to make donations through the district's Amazon wishlist, as well as financial donations through the RevTrack link. We recognize and celebrate Martin Luther King Junior Day on January twentieth. This federal holiday celebrates, commemorates, and honors the life legacy and impact of Dr. King on his birthday, and is also a day of volunteer service. In the words of Dr. King, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" This concludes my comments.
Thank you. Director Knowles?
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you to everyone who helps make our traveling boardroom possible, and thank you to Prairie Middle School for hosting. These are my old stomping grounds. I went to Prairie from sixth through eighth grades and was part of the first permanent sixth-grade class at Prairie back in nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety. They had piloted a sixth-grade class just from Eastridge two years before, but I was part of the first permanent sixth-grade class. I was here when the second gym was added and the entire wing over here was added. I was here when we changed our colors from red and yellow to green and blue. It was in this very gym that M.C. Hammer came to visit us in nineteen ninety. Do you remember that, Tony? Yep. And I had some amazing educators here, with a few of my favorites including Mr. Duncan Harvey, Mr. Doug Mabel, and Miss Jerry Mason, and some legendary coaches like Steve Ramp and Mike Storn. It's always good to be back here. Last Wednesday, several of my colleagues and I joined district leadership, industry sponsors, elected officials, and CCIC staff and students at the groundbreaking of CCIC two point oh. This is the first groundbreaking of the Big Five projects our most recent bond is funding. We'll be breaking ground for the other five over this next year, the other four over this next year, including Nextdoor at IST and the Overland Pool. I've told people it's really fun to be on this side of a successful bond and mill. I know many, many people worked extremely hard to get it passed, and it's wonderful to see the bond projects already starting. The next District Accountability Committee meeting is February fifth at six thirty P.M. at the Instructional Support Facility, which is by Thunder Ridge Middle School. The agenda is still being set, but keep an eye out for if we, because we will probably have a guest speaker present on the twelve forty-one task force. All are welcome. It's too soon to understand the full extent of what the next presidential administration means for K-12 education and our students and their families, but the district is in regular communication with community groups, legislators, the state, Arapahoe County, City of Aurora, and others to plan and prepare for a variety of scenarios that could impact our students and community. We remain fully committed to protecting our students and schools and ensuring all students have equal access to quality public education. It's more important than ever that we ground ourselves in our five core values. With that in mind, the district is committed to doing everything possible to ensure the safety and well-being of all students and staff members regardless of their immigration status, gender identity, sexual orientation, national origin, race, or religion. Public education is a door to opportunity for everyone, and we will continue to be public education proud. Every student is welcome. Every staff member is welcome here in Cherry Creek. That doesn't change no matter what the future holds. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Allen?
Thank you, and good evening and Happy New Year. Thank you to Principal Duran and to the entire Prairie community for hosting tonight's event. I take this opportunity to read and reflect on an article titled "The Purpose of Education" written by Dr. Martin Luther King Junior in nineteen forty-eight at Morehouse College. I chose this article because it speaks directly to the purpose of education and its role in shaping society, a topic as relevant today as it was then. As we approach Martin Luther King Junior Day, it's important to reflect on Dr. King's legacy, which was built on the pursuit of justice, critical thinking, and moral character. Dr. King's essay challenges us to consider how education can advance those values, both in our schools and in our broader community. "The Purpose of Education," Morehouse College, nineteen forty-eight. As I engage in the so-called bull sessions around and about the school, I too often find that most college men have a misconception of the purpose of education. Most of the brethren think that education should equip them with the proper instruments of exploitation so that they can forever trample over the masses. Still, others think that education should furnish them with noble ends rather than means to an end. It seems to me that education has a twofold function to perform in the life of man and in society. The one is utility, and the other is culture. Education must enable a man to become more efficient to achieve with increasing facility the legitimate goals of his life. Education must also train one for quick, resolute, and effective thinking. To think incisively and to think for oneself is very difficult. We are prone to let our mental life become invaded by legions of half-truths, prejudices, and propaganda. At this point, I often wonder whether or not education is fulfilling its purpose. A great majority of the so-called educated people do not think logically and scientifically. Even the press, the classroom, the platform, and the pulpit in many instances do not give us objective and unbiased truths. To save man from the morass of propaganda, in my opinion, is one of the chief aims of education. Education must enable one to sift and weigh evidence, to discern the true from the false, the real from the unreal, and the facts from the fiction. The function of education, therefore, is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. But education which stops with efficiency may prove the greatest menace to society. The most dangerous criminal may be the man gifted with reason but with no morals. The late Eugene Talmadge, in my opinion, possessed one of the better minds of Georgia or even America. Moreover, he wore a Phi Beta Chi cap and key. By all measuring rods, Mr. Talmadge could think critically and intensively, yet he contends that I am an inferior being. Are those the type of men we call educated? We must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. The complete education gives one not only power of concentration but worthy objectives upon which to concentrate. The broad education will, therefore, transmit to one not only the accumulated knowledge of the race but also the accumulated experience of social living. If we are not careful, our colleges will produce a group of closed-minded, unscientific, illogical propagandists consumed with immoral acts. Be careful, brethren. Be careful, teachers. In preparing for tonight's meeting and reflecting on this article, I was compelled to publicly share my commitment to the true purpose of public education. Dr. King's message about the importance of character and critical thinking is deeply embedded in our mission. We are every student to think, to learn, to achieve, to care. His call to prioritize values like integrity, empathy, and responsibility mirrors our commitment to preparing students for both personal success and meaningful contributions to society. Education must go beyond the pursuit of knowledge and test scores. It should cultivate the ability to evaluate information, question assumptions, and think critically. These skills are essential in addressing today's challenges of misinformation and social polarization and ensure our students are prepared to navigate a complex world with compassion and purpose. As I consider decisions about curriculum, resources, and policies, I will continue to ask myself, are we fostering both critical thinking and moral character in our students? Are we equipping them to navigate a complex world with integrity and purpose? I will strive to keep these questions at the heart of my decisions and actions. By remaining true to our mission, working as a team, and listening to one another, we will build a stronger foundation for our schools, honor Dr. King's legacy, and create a more just and thoughtful community. Thank you.
I would like to thank the Overland, I'm sorry, the Prairie community for sponsoring us this evening. The Smoky Hill Student Government will be sponsoring Wish Week from Wednesday, January fifteenth to Friday, January twenty-fourth to support the Make-A-Wish Colorado Foundation and their mission to create life-changing wishes for children with critical issues. A wish experience can be a game changer for a child and their families with critical illness. Wishes increase hope, strength, joy, confidence, and self-esteem in the quality of life and well-being for children during their treatment. Over the break, I had a time, I had the opportunity to spend time with my two favorite Smoky Hill alums, my son and my daughter. As I have mentioned on multiple occasions, they are thriving because of this community. My daughter is participating. She works on her campus farm and does bio research on the animals there, and my son just received a full scholarship to do medical research in South Africa. And so again, I want to thank our voters and the members of this community for investing in our children. When Cherry Creek School District decides on whether or not to call a snow day, our administrators consider a variety of factors. It's not just about weather. It's about, it's about the balance of safety, students, staff, and families with educational, emotional, and community needs. Here are some of the considerations. The safety of students, staffs, and families; travel conditions; arrival and dismissal times; and the overall building safety and community safety. Education is also a source of childcare for many, for many families. Parents depend on schools for childcare and sometimes nutrition. So, snow days have a, have a adverse impact on some vulnerable families. There are also educational considerations. That includes loss of instructional time, having to make up missed work, and the accessibility of online learning. And there, in addition, there are community considerations. That includes local services and, and the employment schedule of friends and families. So ultimately, calling a snow day is a balance between ensuring the safety of all parties involved and minimizing the disruption of students and their educational and social emotional well-being. While the decision often comes down to weather conditions, it also requires a nuanced approach that accounts for logistical issues, the emotional, the emotional needs of students, and the impact on the community at large. Our district's needs often require planning ahead and flexible schedules that allow for swift decision-making, clear communication, and efforts to mitigate the effects on missed instructional time. That concludes my report. We will now have communications from our superintendent.
Thank you, President Garland. Well, you guys stole my thunder, so I just want to say thank you very much. I had the opportunity last Monday to welcome all of our staff back from break. It's a great opportunity to meet, for me, just to share how much I appreciate this school district community and the hard work that they do. Teaching, education, all of it that we do is a difficult job. But the most important job is to make sure that our students feel like they belong here. That's our job. To make sure that they walk through the doors of school. To make sure that they walk through the doors of school every single day and feel like, and know that they belong. I had that opportunity to also share that it's not just kids or young adults. It's our grown adults. Because if they're going to give their best to our students each and every day, they need to know that they belong. And as we go through these uncertain times and have conversations about who matters and who doesn't, everyone matters here. Everyone's journey is important. Everybody's belief systems are important. And I hope that we can continue to have conversations, as Director Allen said, that are healthy. We may disagree, but that's okay, as long as we ensure that the humanity is the focus of what we do and why we do it. That's not going to change in Cherry Creek. We may have to navigate some things, but we will continue to do our work. This is Board Appreciation Month. And I want to say to these unpaid volunteers, in other districts, the superintendent wouldn't be able to say that. So I want to say thank you to all of you for your belief in kids, because this isn't about politics. This is about public education, and everyone has a right to it. And everyone has a right to walk through the doors and feel like they belong here. And you start that vision as five women who lead this district, and I couldn't be more thankful. I also want to thank the Prairie Middle School for allowing us to be here tonight, and all the staff. And I do want to celebrate one person. We got to celebrate her this morning, Ms. Jill Hendon, the executive director of our foundation, who has given her time, her energy, and also given a whole lot of money to the Cherry Creek School District through her endeavors to make this school district a better place. She has an opportunity to chase her dreams at the Rose Foundation, and I wish her all the best of luck. Thank you, Ms. Hendon, for all that you've given to the Cherry Creek School District. Wish you well. Please stay in touch. And then lastly, again, I just, Ms. Garland, thank you for that, because there is a lot that goes into calling a snow day, and I don't take it lightly. And it's real difficult when the forecast is wrong. So I appreciate everyone's patience with me, with our school district. We aren't perfect, but we are dedicated to be an excellent. That concludes my comments. I would like to invite the team up, who is going to talk about our Cherry Creek Literacy Plan. I'm so excited about this opportunity. Our data is going up, our collaboration is becoming better, and I'm so excited about the opportunity for them to share. I also want to remind everyone that you've heard this a couple of times before, so I asked them to be a little more brisk in their presentation tonight to give you opportunities to ask questions of them. So, let you introduce everybody.
All right. Good evening, President Garland, Board of Education. Thank you for your time tonight and allowing us to be here. It's an honor to be sitting in front of you with Board Appreciation Month, and so thank you for all you do for all of us in the Cherry Creek School District. We appreciate you all a ton, so, so thank you. Before we get started, I just want to introduce the team. What's super cool about this is it's a cross-department effort, this presentation, and so it shows the collaboration that's happening behind the scenes to make sure we're providing clarity and alignment behind our strategic plan. And so without this collaboration, those efforts are tough. And so with me tonight, oh, I'm trying to introduce myself. I'm Toby Aratola, Executive Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Dominique Jones, Executive Director of Performance Improvement, Missy Matthews, Director of Title I, and Darla Quintana Thompson, Director of Professional Learning. Tonight, we want to go through and share some of the work we're doing, like I said, to provide alignment to our strategic plan so we can hit the goal in literacy, 2030 of all students reading a proficiency. And so, looking at the outcomes for tonight, we want to provide an update from our Literacy Priority Team. That priority team is part of our strategic planning team, a committee that strictly focuses on literacy, does a lot of work, and sets a lot of goals for our district that we'll be rolling out to our schools here in the near future. And then also share some of the aligned efforts in support of the strategic plan around literacy, just so you can see the through line of what's happening, so things seem connected, because that's our ultimate goal. The one thing we don't want to do is have a bunch of different initiatives happening where teachers are trying to grasp on to what's most important. We're trying to really align our efforts so teachers can do the right work for all One thing our Literacy Priority Team did in collaboration with the literacy goal of 2030, all students reading a proficiency, is really looking at goals that are specific, that are measurable, and that are attainable. So when we look at the reduction of read plans across all levels, we set a goal by May of 2025, each school will reduce the number of read plans by 17%. That 17% comes when you look at the number we need to decrease them by in order to reach that 2030 goal that's been set by the district. Goal two, increasing percentage of students demonstrating proficiency. We've set a couple of goals, and we've really focused on grades 2, 4, 8, and 10. We consider those critical grade levels to look at the data, because those are where big changes within the standards come, and so we need to make sure we're focusing on those grade levels to make sure we're doing what we need to to get kids to that proficiency level. So, for second grade, by 2025, 60% of second grade students will demonstrate proficiency in reading on STAR. Fourth graders' meaning proficiency will increase from 45.4% to 56% on CMAAS. Eighth graders' meaning proficiency will increase from 51.4% to 61% on CMAAS. And then finally, our 10th graders', percent of 10th graders' meaning proficiency will increase from 75% to 80% on the PSAT. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones at this point, and Missy Matthews.
All right. So it's our pleasure to be able to share some bright spots with all of you this evening. And I'm going to start with the Cherry Creek Literacy Plan. And so we are in year two of the Cherry Creek Literacy Plan, and we are at this time working towards the implementation tights that are identified within that year-two plan. What you see here on the screen is the data that's collected at the beginning of the year compared to how our schools are self-reporting about their implementation of those tights that are within the year-two of the Cherry Creek Literacy Plan. And so what I'd like to draw attention to is we start to see that the yellow, which is showing an area of need that we could put some attention to, is decreasing, while the greens are starting to increase, which means that that's an area that schools are reporting as successful. These are end-of-year targets that we're talking about, and so there is no expectation that schools are reporting out green across the board at the beginning of the year. What we want to see is that more schools are indicating that they're finding success in each of those components. There are seven components that attend to universal literacy instruction, literacy leadership at the building level, what it means for how we're thinking about supplemental and intervention instruction, professional learning, database decision-making. The database decision-making is an area that has a higher area that schools are indicating as a place where they're going to need some support. And so as we continue into this evening, you are going to hear many of the actions that we've taken really being honed around how we're supporting our system and their data literacy. This is STAR data, and STAR is our interim assessment. We use STAR early at the start of our learning experience, so our kindergarten, really through third-grade students are using STAR early, and then fourth through 10th grade are doing STAR reading. This is not meant to be a deep dive into STAR data, just a celebration, as Superintendent Smith indicated, that we are seeing numbers trending in the right direction, where schools and students are making gains in their literacy efforts. So tonight, we just want to celebrate and shout out that this is happening, that we are seeing the growth that we intended to see because of the strategic actions that have been put into place. When Director Norm Alerta comes, and he is from our Assessment and Performance Analytics team, he will do a much deeper, comprehensive dive into all of the different pieces of the STAR data, but for now, just a celebration of what we're starting to see from fall to
So while we know that that deep dive is coming really soon with Director Alerta, we did want to highlight for our Title I schools, a data point for our winter STAR reading data, and we wanted to specifically look at across the year. So between winter of '23 and winter of '24, we are seeing that there's significant growth in the percentage of students who are scoring in that at or above benchmark, which is absolutely the trend we want to see, putting us in the right direction. And then on the opposite side of that, the decrease in the percentage of students who are needing intense support. While we look at those percentages across those bands really, really clearly, at the very bottom of this, there's an average scale score that gives us really important information about the kind of growth related to that reading achievement that we need to see. So while we know we've got that disaggregated data dig coming, this, just snapshot, for our Title I schools feels really important right now as an early celebration, because we do know historically, when we set really important goals for our system, as go our achievement of those goals, Title I is a place we want to make sure we're keeping track of that data. So in our work as a strategic planning team, and specifically our priority team, this is a graphic that we use really often to define the work that we're doing, and making sure that the acts of improvement that we are planning for are not random and leading us potentially in lots of different directions, but that our work continues to create real alignment. On my way over here today, I was talking with a principal who just happened to be leaving a guiding coalition meeting, and she said to me, "Missy, I've never felt the kind of alignment, and I didn't realize that it was happening until I was sitting in that guiding coalition meeting today." As they were talking about the data that they were planning for and the way those teachers would lead in their collaborative teams, our system is feeling that alignment. So just continuing to have this graphic helps us to make sure that all of our next strategic actions are really aligned. And so that's what we want to share next, is for our team, where are, what are the next actions that we're planning for in the second semester?
So I mentioned that data literacy is one of the areas that we really have identified as where some of our strategic actions need to take place. So intentional work really happening, connected to how are we understanding what it is that students know and understand and are able to do through their data? And then how is that informing teachers and schools to be better positioned in order to be able to be responsive and make adjustments so that those individual student needs are being met? What you see up here is just an example of that. So Prairie is one of our schools that is leveraging a resource that's available across our system, fourth up, to be able to have a targeted resource called Just Words. That is a curricular resource that's very targeted in how we are supporting students who are fourth grade and older in their foundational literacy schools. And from a really deep analysis of specific data points, schools are able to leverage this resource. It has primarily been in our elementary schools up to this school year to then be able to provide that targeted intervention that typically happens during what we call a WIN time, which stands for what I need. And so Prairie Middle School is one of our middle schools that's starting to move in this direction of leveraging this resource to be able to support students at a really deep level based off of the data indicating that that's an area to support them. And sticking with that idea of that data analysis that needs to happen, when read plans initially rolled out, there was this significant emphasis, from then, I would say, up until now, around the creation of read plans. We even heard one of our student presenters talk about that tonight. Creating read plans, identification is that a student needs in order to be able to make those gains towards grade-level expectations, but there has not been as heavy of an emphasis on students exiting from read plans. And so as Toby indicated, one of the goals that the strategic plan team has really talked about is, then what does that mean for us to start closing the gap? How are we attending to the read plans that need to be exited? And so part of what the literacy team has been doing is this really thorough data analysis connected to all of the different literacy data points that schools and teachers might dig into when they're thinking about where students are that have read plans. They meet with school teams, they are having conversations about who are the kids that are right on the cusp? They're almost right there, ready to be exited from plans? And what are the interventions or the strategic instructional actions that we might take in order to be able to exit students from those plans? But we are also having those conversations at the principal level for them to have a better sense of where to find the data, how to make sense of the data, and how to use that data to better engage in conversations with the teams at their schools. And because that's one of our goals that we're working on, that means that we also then have to be paying attention to the plans that are being exited. So clearly, this is not a list of all of our schools, but just meant to provide a snapshot of that monitoring that's happening for us to be able to be paying attention to how many exits are happening, where might there need to be additional conversations? And our literacy team will continue to push into buildings and have conversations with school teams, the ones that are very closest to the work, about what it looks like and what supports might need to be in place to continue to support students in exiting read plans.
A next strategic action that our team is working towards is really learning from the stories of our students. In our process, we know we've got lots of quantitative data. We can see measures on assessments, and there's this real need to have the stories behind some of the data that exists for us. We're spending some time working with educators within our system to identify students who can really help us understand what their reading experience has been while they've been here with us in the Cherry Creek School District. So we're talking with some students who have been on a read plan previously, and some students who continue to be on a read plan. We're not super curious about what they know about their read plan. Instead, we want to, we want to take a step a little bit higher from that and say, "Talk to us about who you are as a reader and a scholar. Tell us about your experience and how the instruction you've received to grow as a reader has helped you define yourself as a learner." And we then want to ask them to give us some advice. What are some things that you wish educators, your principals, your teachers knew about instruction? And what are we not yet considering from our students who have benefited from this very targeted reading instruction? So we're getting that in the second semester. One of our strategies that actually began and is pretty completed, we really knew we needed to hear the voice of principals. We knew that we, there's a, the greatest volume of read plans are in our Title I schools. So we took time over the first semester to interview and talk with the principals in our Title I schools, understand what's the experience for educators in their buildings, given the large demands of read plans. What they told us was, writing read plans was not really the big lift. It's actually the progress monitoring that's required as part of the read plan, that every three weeks, they're offering, doing some progress monitoring and entering data. They talked to us about the impact of professional learning time at the beginning of the school year, that they need to really, they'll be rethinking the design potentially of how time is used at very strategic points in the year, whether it be beginning of the year, right before first conferences, and then again at the end of the year, because they know teachers need more support with time to complete some of those demands. One of the factors that principals named that we're thinking a lot about is that they, now that they have read plans and better data systems, they know their students better as readers, but yet we're not, we haven't yet designed the time to really strategically use that knowledge for the design of instruction based on that. So our team has taken that feedback, and now are having conversations, when we meet together as a priority team, to identify where are the needs for training, where's the need for additional support from our district? You know, we think about partners, and then just the experience of learning from what's working really well in some of our title schools to respond to this big lift that happens for our students, or our teachers in our Title I schools. A third important action this year has been the increased foundations data collection. As you're going to hear shortly, Toby and Darla are going to talk about that really important collaborative culture and a focus on results that's important for all, for us to meet these goals that we've set for ourselves. And so this strategic action allowed us to use a different kind of data point. We've got, when we use STAR, that's an interim measure or potentially a diagnostic measure to see how our students are growing. But our foundations instruct- use a different kind of data point. We've got, when we use STAR, that's an interim measure or potentially a diagnostic measure to, to see how our students are growing. But our foundations instruction, so this is a curricular resource that we use, and then we have an end of unit assessment. It's very close to the teaching and the learning. So this data point allows us to watch a little bit more timely how students are meeting that 80% mastery of foundational skills in their foundations learning. Our literacy partners started to have conversations with all of our instructional coaches in all of our elementary buildings to look at this data, see where we're potentially, we don't have data that's clean and we made it, maybe needed to do some training or potentially dig into what does the data tell us so we can do some professional learning about next instruction? This is a piece of data that one principals come together, we look at every, during every meeting, and we're just tracking progress across the year to better understand what, what does this data tell us? How does this give us better information about structures, professional learning that's needed so that we're, our students are growing in their foundational skills? And then at the very beginning of the year, we had administrators focus on this in some action research as they identified was this is a need for, just a, a, a time for focus for them. So this data has given us some really important information that helps us even better understand some of our STAR data. So we're going to go ahead and move to Toby to talk more about our professional learning communities.
One of our big K-12 strategic actions is to re-ground ourselves in professional learning communities. We started this work in 2015 and through surveys from principals, their voices came through that this is work that they wanted to continue learning about and re-ground themselves about. So we made the decision of if we're going to do this right, we need to make sure everybody's on the same field moving forward. And so that's the work we've started this year is really looking at what does it mean for a school, for Cherry Creek to become a professional learning community? Because there's a lot of teams going through the motions, but they're not doing the right work. And so we have to make sure teams are doing the right work in order to move the needle of student learning. One thing we want to ensure is that all students have the ability to learn at high levels. And I think of Brian Butler, he used to be a professional basketball player, now he's a professional developer. He talks about, we need to teach all kids walking into our classrooms like they're general education students first, and he is challenging us to go one step further. Let's teach all of our kiddos coming into our classrooms like they're gifted. Let's give them that opportunity. Let's not put layers on them. Once we do, more than likely, we're going to teach those kiddos to lower standards and that's not okay. And so we really need to make sure we're ensuring we're doing the right work to get all students to high levels of learning each and every day. One of the things PLC's focus on is three big ideas to help ground ourselves. Pretty simple concepts, but you know, through COVID, a lot of these have shifted. First big idea is focus on learning. We need to make sure that we're not covering content, that kids are actually learning content, because there's a big difference. And so through COVID, there was a push to make sure we're covering as much content as possible to get kids caught up. And what we're finding is, is actually having the reverse effects. Kids aren't mastering content, so we're creating larger gaps in their understanding of material, and that's shame on us. And so we need to make sure we're slowing down and, and guaranteeing that kids are learning content that we're expecting them to learn. Second big idea is a collaborative culture. How do we get educators working together? And this is an important concept because when you look at the research of John Hattie, who's done some of the largest educational research in the, in the world, he has found that collective teacher efficacy, meaning groups of teachers doing the right work and they have the belief that they can impact students positively each and every day, has an effect size of 1.34. To put that in context, when you look at his work, .4 is an effect size that we shoot for. So when you look at a 1.34 compared to a .4, that's almost four years' worth of student growth just by having that belief in themselves as a collective team. And so that collective piece is super important. The third big idea of a PLC is results orientation, as Missy alluded to earlier, we can't leave learning to chance. That's not fair to our kiddos. And so what are we doing to have evidence of student learning? Because if we miss it, that's detrimental to kids as they move through our PK-12 system. And so we have to make sure that we're looking at data, using data to focus on those results that are proving to us, students are learning the content we need them to learn. Shifting to that, one thing collaborative teams focus on at schools is answering four essential questions. Those four essential questions are a starting point because if we can't answer these questions, it's detrimental to student learning. And that first question we look at that kind of grounds this work is what do we want all students to know and be able to do? This work gets into how are teams identifying essential standards, standards they deem most important, that kids have to master by the time they leave at a grade level or move on to a new content course. Research behind that shows, if you look at Marzano's current research, our system would need to go from a K-12 system to a K-22 system. We would need 10 years of schooling to get kids to mastery of all standards that states and, and the government are asking teachers to get kids to. So essential standards are a big piece of that. The other big piece of that is when teams have this discussion, we're taking away the educational lottery for, for our kids and parents. And so what I mean by that is teachers are then able to set outcomes for, that are the same for every class, and you're not hoping that you get that best teacher that has the best results for your child. And that's not, that, that, that's not fair, right? Because if you don't know how to navigate the educational system, sometimes that's really tough. And so just really aligning what, what teams are doing to benefit all students. Second question that lives within that is how will we know if they have learned it? Start to look at student data, especially common formative assessments. Common formative assessments are an act during learning, not an act after the learning, and so it's something that we can act on in the moment. What kids are getting it, which kids are struggling, and what supports do we need to provide them in order they, so they can continue their learning journey? One thing we're trying to shift philosophically is it can't be a one and done. Just because you taught it and a kid didn't get it, doesn't mean you're moving on, right? We have to provide opportunities to kiddos that have time and support to re-engage in the content in a different way, so they have a, a true ability to master those essential standards. Question three and four hit on what will we do if they do not learn it and what will they do if they already know it? This happens each and every day, right? And so the thing about this, it creates flexible and fluid grouping. So kids aren't locked into a group. I think when I was in third grade, at the beginning of the year, I took a reading test and Mrs. Hyde kept me in the red group, which was the low group until the end of the year, no matter what I did, or how I performed on a test. And I will tell you, it was detrimental to me, and I can remember that now. I'm 50, I hate to admit that, but I can remember that till this day, right? And so how do we do better by our kids? If we know they're not getting it, what are we going to do differently in order to provide them opportunity to get it? And if they already know it, what are we going to do to make sure they have opportunity to engage in content a deeper, in a deeper way? One thing you'll see frequently to answer question four is, well, let's give them a hundred-page packet and let them do it independently. That's not good for kids, right? What happens is you start to see behaviors pops up, they become bored, disengaged. We need to find opportunities for them to do some project-based learning experiences, maybe some peer-to-peer tutoring and teaching. How do we engage them differently in these essential standards so they have an opportunity to look at it in a deeper way and go an inch, an inch wide and a mile deep with this content?
So as my colleagues spoke to some of the strategic moves that they made, one of the key levers in our strategies was our ability to support our instructional leaders, being our principals and our instructional coaches, the IERCs. And so part of that has been really being thoughtful and intentional about how are we growing and building the capacity of them to be able to support our educators? So part of that strategic move is, as Toby alluded to, is this idea of the power of collaboration and in a department work, collaboration working together. And so want to give a shout out to the Departments of Human Resources, Educational Operations, Performance Improvement, and CCEA, because without that partnership, we wouldn't be able to expand and provide the instructional support through our coaches that we've, in the ways that we've been able to. Just as a reminder, we're in our fourth year of instructional coaches at the elementary level and our third year of instructional excellence race coaches at the secondary level. In that collaboration of really working towards identifying and supporting the regrounding in professional learning communities, we were real thoughtful and strategic in the ways that we were bringing our principals and our instructional coaches together to learn and engage in some pretty strategic and focused training. And so what you'll see here are just the days in which we brought our coaches and our principals together to do that. So on July 28th was really a regrounding, not only in PLCs, but really more of what does it require and what does it mean to work in partnership as an instructional coach and a principal and instructional leadership team. On October 7th, we really delved deep into essential question one. And on November 19th and 28th, we had the opportunity and the privilege to work with Maria Nelson, who actually provided a process for our teachers to engage in to help identify those essential standards, really in response to question one. On December 11th, our focus is on essential question two, and how are we leveraging data to support our decisions that we're making in our planning? We're going to continue looking at data in question two on February 10th. And then on March 10th, we're going to kind of sum and wrap up our PLC focus with Louise Cruz, who's going to come and do some professional learning, that will also tie in questions three and four. In addition to the shared experience and the professional learning, we've been really intentional, I'd like, what's the through line in what coaches are receiving in partnership with principals at Adco? And then what is the deeper dive of learning and professional development that's happening for them on their pink days? One of the things I offered to the board is a reminder, the pink day really is just the color of the day, is how it was on the calendar, but it stuck. And so we continue to reference the professional learning days for our coaches as pink days. But what you'll notice is the focus has been on PLCs and collaborative teams with the primary resource being learning by doing. We had the 15-day challenge, which was really focused on unit planning and identifying essential standards. We did also delve deep into collective efficacy and then data and assessment literacy. So part of the celebrations and the bright spots for the work that coaches are doing in schools is the implementation of the 50-day challenge. So I do have just a few celebrations that I wanted to share with you on some of the work that the schools are doing. I gotta turn the page, hold please. So what we've had is middle schools facilitating the 50-day challenge with the entire staff. We had middle schools facilitating with language arts teachers, with elective teachers. We had one middle school that brought all 18 elective teachers to engage in the identifying essential standards. Several elementary schools have met with about every grade level in identifying essential standards and also common formative assessments. We also, what's super exciting that I, and Missy spoke to this idea, principals saying and really feeling the alignment, is we have common language that's occurring K-12. If you go to any level, any principal, any coach, they can tell you what a boulder, rock, and a butterfly is in terms of how they're unpacking standards, which is pretty exciting. And then also, we have IERCs who are working in collaboration with collaborative team facilitators to continue to build their capacity and work of collaborative teams. And so hopefully, I was really quick. What you will see today is just this collaboration, this partnership, the intentionality of really trying to align and get the ship going in the right same direction. And so it's this partnership, being really focused on what it is that our goals are, that have allowed us to be super strategic and intentional in our, in our moves and in our direction of serving all kids.
Thank you. We'll start our questions with Director Egan.
Hi, thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I'm going to start at the back and ask the question about this intentional strategic direction, which is great, but I'm just wondering about alignment at the highest level and bringing in all the pieces together. I'm glad to see Dr. Jones here tonight as well, and you mentioned Norm Alerta, but I'm curious about the conversations around, in your PLC work and bringing in math, science, literacy, all of these together under one umbrella.
I'm going to answer what I heard in that question, and if I missed something, please circle back to me. So one of the things that we've been really intentional about as a curriculum and instruction team is to make sure that we really are deeply understanding what it means to go through that 15-day challenge process. Just like the principals and the IERC sat through all of those professional learning opportunities, so did the curriculum and instruction partners and partners from other departments as well. And then what we have been doing in the last two months in curriculum and instruction is engaging in this work and unpacking it and making sense of it ourselves. And all of the content partners have been out side by side with teachers or collaborative teams as they are engaging in this work as well. So it really is some, like Darla just mentioned, we are all able to speak about boulders, rocks, and butterflies because it is the conversation that we're all having now as we're thinking about what does it mean to unit plan and really understand the standards that we're targeting within this unit.
Thank you. And then when you talk about scholars, one of the first slides that you have, just wondering how, I know that you are selecting those because they've been, these students have been through the program and they have gained a lot from this. I just wondered if you could talk more about the parents being brought into this and then also the selection process of that?
The word scholar?
Yes.
Yes. That is a term that we use really frequently to describe students. When we think about building learner identities, using that term scholars to define students and educators in, just as a very general term, we want students to walk away from their educational experience with us defining themselves as a scholar. So we've used that term here very intentionally because we use that in, in lots of settings and lots of ways to really, you know, approach this as a, how we're building our identities, that we are scholars. We, we have taught, we mentioned the role of parents and in terms of the interviews that will happen with students for them to give us their, their feedback, we will have, you know, parents aware of that those are happening so that they're, you know, knowing their student is giving us their feedback. And then just a side note of, we, and as part of our planning team, we know that we need parent voice in this too. That isn't one of the strategic actions we've named to date, but it has come up in conversations as some, another partner in this work that we know is critically important.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's great. So I've mentioned this before, but when you talk about the targeted intervention and Prairie specifically, I know that you brought up Just Words, and I, I guess I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that targeted intervention and what that program specifically is doing?
So Just Words is part of the Wilsons family and Foundations is what we use in our kindergarten through third grade foundational skills. That's the curricular resource that we use in that realm. Just Words is then the extension, what we would call tier two, tier three, really getting more targeted and intensive in the support that it's providing. If I am a student who is fourth grade and beyond and I still have gaps of learning in my foundational skills, then there is an additional targeted intervention that I need in order to be able to continue to help me build those skills. It is not for every single student, and so I'll name this as an example because we've been doing lots of work with Highline as well. So they just gave, they're looking at different assessment points. There's another assessment point that they're using and it helps them identify which students are going to be, are going to be best served by this curricular resource. And it's not about it being the new shiny thing, it's that it is targeting a very specific population of students to be able to help them quickly make the gains that they need to fill those foundational holes.
Okay, great. That, that's helpful to me. So I'm excited about this work, so excited to see the progress. And about PLCs, that's been a subject near and dear to my heart, so I'm excited about the alignment among that and the instructional coaches kind of being able to bring that down as well. So thank you for all you do and appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Knowles?
Thank you for being here tonight. I asked most of my questions when we saw this last week, but a couple of comments. I will mention that at the breakfast with the board that we have with the various schools across the district, the word alignment is coming up more and more. So you are seeing that happen, which is great. And so whatever you're saying, it, I hear it, you know, and out of the principals. So that's wonderful. I wondered, just one question, the 15-day challenge, just making sure I understand this correctly, is this like 15 days of instruction and they're kind of mapping it out? And then do they, how frequently do they have these challenges?
Yeah, so it's not really like a game challenge per se. It's more like a year in and unit planning for teams, so they're more intentional around, here's where these essentials are going to be taught, number of days, and then here's where a common formative assessment might hit. What it does, it keeps them on the same page. Because a lot of times what you'll see is a team going through the work, and then one teacher's like, you know what, I'm going to take an extra five days. They go to look to data-
They go to look to data and they can't talk about the data because that one teacher's behind. So it's a unit plan to help keep them all on the same page and moving that work forward.
And how frequently are they planning this out?
You know, it depends right now on the school. We have schools doing it every unit within HMH, which is, there's a lot of excitement. And then we have some right now dipping their toe in the water, just because it's a different dynamic within those teams. And so with the help of Darla and the IERCs, you know, the evidence we see in schools, I think if I was in eight schools this week, elementary schools, kind of what you said, Ruthie, was you hear it, right? And so when you start talking about coaches collaborating, which is where we need them to be to build their capacity, it's super cool to see a coach in the Cherokee Trail Theater collaborating with coaches in the Overland Theater, right? Because it shouldn't be, we're locked into a theater, we're doing the work for all kids. And so this ability to align the work intentionally is paying dividends for the work that's happening in schools, and you can see it, right? I'm geeking out, taking pictures, like, holy cow, look at the work they're doing. And so that alignment piece though, that you're talking about, is so important, because if we're talking different, using different language to describe the same things, it breaks the system down, and then who does it ultimately affect is our students.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Allen?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I love our setup, that gives us some time after the study session to reflect on what we've learned based on our questions and the presentation. Sometimes we have a lot of questions, sometimes not so many. I think this is going to be for me, one of those not so many. I just think I need one, I would like one point of clarification with Just Words. Is this, when you say it's a curricular resource, is it instruction from a teacher or is it more like Lexia where it's all online?
Well, Lexia is also not only online.
Okay, so I've sat there with my daughter for hours, just like an eighth grader. You know, so we do get to that very excited point, and the teachers are phenomenal. I just, I'm just curious about how Just Words...
Yeah. No, Just Words is all direct teacher instruction, and it wouldn't be more than 15 students in a group that are getting that targeted direct instruction from a teacher.
Fair enough.
And Lexia has small group lessons that do that also.
Yes. And the combination, especially when our kids are really comfortable in accessing material that we aren't, I see a place for both. Just want to make sure that it's not all computer-driven, because our teachers and their minds are phenomenal, and their desire to not just teach, but to have their students learn. So thank you very much. I appreciate that, although this is just, you know, it's not a complete picture of the data, I really love that we're in the middle of the year and you've come back with some additional data, so we can keep our eye on what those goals are. So thank you so much, and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you. My question is, like, as we've been working more towards the alignment of our teaching, are we noticing any patterns with either our systems or students or in those processes where kids need replans? Are we identifying any patterns in that process?
I would say that that is part of the conversation that we're always having as a literacy priority team. So Missy alluded to getting some trend data from principals about some of the things that they're seeing as bright spots, but really, like, what are the barriers and roadblocks that are getting in the way, which is now having us relook at some of our systems as an example. What might it look like for replans to roll over as opposed to having to be recreated at the beginning of every year? Have it be a starting place instead. So yes, there are conversations certainly about the trends that we're noticing, and we'll continue to be very open to what are the other things that we're recognizing? So, you know, I think what everybody has offered connected to the professional learning community's work is, there was a need to level set. Let's all, what did you say, be on the same field? Get everybody on the same field, having the same conversations, using the same language. And so I think that we are trying to be really intentional about what are the trends that we're noticing? How is the system and teachers and students responding to those intentional changes that have been put into place? What are the things that we want to make sure that we continue to have going? Or what are the things that we're going to need to continue to think about, ooh, maybe not like that, what modifications need to be made? And those are the conversations that we're having as a part of the literacy priority team and the bigger strategic planning team each time.
I just want to add, President Garland, you asked quite a few about the correlation between behavior and reading. That is part of the disproportionality group of the strategic plan, so they are looking at those data points. If we have students who are struggling with the capacity to read, are they finding other ways to show us? And what we are finding is yes. And so those two things are in correlation, so it's not just about the instruction to get them to read, it's also what are they saying to us with their behaviors to help support them? So it's kind of twofold in that, but that was a question that the board asked us to dig into, so we're digging into that as well. Once we get some more hard data on that, we'll bring that back, but we're kind of just kind of working through it.
And then along those same lines, like, how are our older students, particularly middle and high schoolers, responding to the title of a read plan? I guess I would think like an elementary, right? But if I'm in middle and high school and have a read plan, like, what is that? Have we talked about that at all?
That's part of the need to be able to go to students and say, help us understand from your experience, from your perspective. And like Missy named, it's not necessarily about that you have a read plan, but having a better sense of what their literacy journey has been. And so that is data that we absolutely are committed to collecting and hearing it directly from their mouths.
That concludes my questions. Thank you.
It is at this point in our meeting that we make time for members of the audience who have completed the online public comment forum prior to 12 noon today to address the Board of Education. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to a maximum of two minutes. A buzzer will sound at the end of the two minutes and the microphone and audio will be automatically muted. Each speaker may only speak once during public comment. Speaking time may not be shared between speakers. This is your opportunity to make comments to the Board of Education in accordance with board policy. It is not a question-and-answer session. Please confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the district. Further, please recognize that students attend most of our meetings. Speakers whose statements or behavior are unrelated to the business of the district, appear threatening or unsafe, or are inappropriate for K-12 students, may be interrupted or warned and their opportunity for comment terminated. Audience members who speak are asked to do so in a respectful manner, and the audience is encouraged to listen respectfully. Any speaker or audience member who disrupts the good order of the board meeting, including the speaking time of others, may be asked to leave. We are very interested in your feedback and will listen carefully. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you in advance for your comments and for taking the time to attend tonight's meeting. Mr. Koenig, could you please read our list of speakers?
Brent Harris. Thank you for your time in a moment of personal privilege. It's been my dream job as a school social studies teacher, most notably for the last 12 years here in Cherry Creek, where I was a student. But long-term disability prevents me from re-entering my classroom anytime soon, but my passion for Cherry Creek Schools and its students remains strong, because my son Calvin is in second grade at Black Forest Hills and my daughter Emma is two and racing to pre-K faster than I could have imagined. In the coming days, weeks, months, I'm going to be reaching out and taking time to listen to as many people who are willing to engage with me as I figure out what is the best next step for me to take on my pathway of purpose here in CCSD. My two minutes expired at the December meeting before I could finish what I just said. Seeing the number of speakers at both tonight's meeting and that meeting, I respectfully suggest we reevaluate the necessity of such a strict time limit on public comments. While brevity is understandable during contentious meetings or times of public safety, perhaps we could extend the time when there's less conflict and more cause for celebration, as is the case tonight. Tonight, you're approving commendable work and $1.192 billion budget for next year. There should be more community members here to celebrate these accomplishments. I understand that your positions governing our large organization are unpaid, that we've been unfortunate to have very, we have been fortunate to have very selfless leaders who have served our community well. But might that limit the ability of educational professionals with lifelong dedication to Cherry Creek Schools to serve without pay? Due to my professional circumstances, my family's support during my medical needs, I'm exploring a run for the Director D seat, which is open this November, and for which I could afford to do one term unpaid, but not two. I appreciate Jennifer Haynes' stewardship during my medical leave, which ended December 31st. Since school award nominations do not open until 90 days before the election, I have some questions. As Haynes suggested, I speak with Gancy Mansfield, Sonia McKenzie, and Ian Lopez about my plans. If any of you are present, I'd love to chat first in person, otherwise I'll reach out this week.
All right, President Garland, that's all for tonight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Resolutions 25.1 through 25.14.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen?
Aye.
Egan?
Aye.
Garland?
Aye.
Knowles?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next meeting will be on Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at Foxridge Middle School, located at 26301 East Arapahoe Road in Aurora, Colorado. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn the January 13th, 2025 meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen?
Aye.
Egan?
Aye.
Garland?
Aye.
Knowles?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned.